And we will call this meeting to order. Item one on the agenda is the flag salute. Are we gonna, Ryan, are we gonna, do you want me to do the flag salute? Or do we, how do we handle that?
You're welcome to do it, or you're welcome to ask anybody else to do it if you'd like.
I'm fine to do it. So if everybody will join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thanks, everybody. Item two, we're gonna, we're gonna have a roundtable discussion among the board members and staff addressing the following topic, and this will be for discussion only with no action. We'll be discussing the description of the roles, assignments, and funding for teachers on special assignment, acronym TOSA, and paraprofessionals in the Carson City School District. So at this time, we're, we're, we'll be in a workshop, and then once we're done, at seven o'clock, we'll call the board meeting to order. So with that, I wasn't sure if we had established who was gonna start this, but Richard, is this something you or Tasha were gonna start?
Yes, thank you, Vice President. We have ready to go Mrs. Fusan, and as was stated in the agenda, we had put together some additional information that will, that is associated with both our TOSA's and our paraprofessionals, and we wanted to make sure that the trustees were fully versed in the relative funding mechanisms, also in the responsibilities, the assignments of these specialized support staff members, and then to also lay out in general the number of individuals that we have at our various sites and how they're paid for. And so with your permission, I'll turn the time over to Mrs. Fusan.
Yes, please, thank you.
Good evening, trustees. Tasha Fusan for the record. Hopefully, you were able to see on your screens in front of you or in your board packet a sheet with the title across the top, Instructional Support Staff, TOSA's, and Paraprofessionals. We'll be referencing this document through this workshop. The first step, when I compiled this together based on our conversation from our March 10th presentation, was really trying to lay out for everyone the different funding sources that we have within the district that we use for instructional support staff, whether it be classified or certified instructional support staff. So the, the first fund is SB 178 funds. The amount for the upcoming school year, so school fiscal year '21, is just a little over $1.4 million. That particular amount is calculated based on $1,200 per student who, within our district, who are English language learners or eligible for free reduced lunch. The students that score within the bottom 25th percentile within the K8, that's on S back, and within the high schools, that's ACT. Students who are not enrolled in a Zoom or Victory School, and students who do not have an IEP. So it's very prescribed in terms of the funding mechanism or the amount of funds that we get based on those four pieces. With that particular fund, the allocations have to be distributed directly to the schools based on the number of students that they have within their respective sites that fall into those categories. And then each school is required to write an SB 178 plan that, that revolves around the items that you see in letter C. So either extended learning opportunities, academic interventions, early childhood education, parent and family engagement programs, school climate or culture programs, and school, excuse me, social, psychological, or health care services. So those funds, again, are specifically to be distributed to sites, and the sites then create a school performance plan goal based on that sub-pop of students and, and implement those interventions. So that's the first type of funding that we'll talk about. The second type of funding is pre-K. This is based on the school fiscal year '20, so this school year is a little over $803,000. The, as you, most of you know, we applied for a competitive grant and within our district for pre-K, and we were awarded a significant amount of money to really launch our pre-K programming over the last couple of years. This particular year, however, we received substantially less amount of money to support pre-K. Like I said, it's a little over $803,000. And that was because the state decided to fund pre-K based on the number of seats each district had the previous year, whether they were fully funded or partially funded. So, so we, we had to continue our pre-K programming this year with reduced funds. So we've had to supplement that, those funds with other grant monies. The third one, AB 289, Read by Grade 3. That is the school fiscal year '20, so that's the school year, a little over $400,000 that we received for our Read by Grade 3 funding. That is, that particular funding is earmarked for literacy specialists to be placed in the elementary schools. We do have to create, or had to create, a literacy plan for our district and submit that to the state as well. And then we have to outline for them under AB 289 exactly how we're allocating those resources to schools. This, again, is another pot of money that does not fully fund the program within our district, so we were required to supplement those funds with other grants to provide those literacy specialists. The fourth type of funding falls under AB 309. This is for school fiscal year '21. Just so you know, the, the reason why some of them, I don't have next year's numbers, is we haven't received those preliminary allocations from the state yet, the notifications. So in the cases that we have notifications on the amount for next school year, I included that. Otherwise, I included the amounts that we were working from this year. So in AB 309, those specific funds are block, block grant funds for designated programs within innovation and prevention of remediation. So very specific guidance under NRS 387-1247. And according to AB 309, those funds are to be allocated for seven different purposes that you have in front of you. Primarily, though, what we're using them within our district is for carrying out Nevada Ready 21 technology program purposes, because we, that program funding source that we had in the past came to an end, and we still have programming needs and carrying out great teaching and leading fund purposes. Again, they, they referred to that in the past as GTLF. We applied for GTLF funding, did not receive it, but instead were awarded 309 funds by the state to, to support that programming, those programming, the plans within the GTLF original grant. The, that fund is a little over 300,000, 321. Then we have, well, before I go on, actually, I should probably ask you if you have any questions about those first four. Again, my intent was just to give you all information, or audience information, about the grant funding sources and the purposes of the funding. But if you have specific questions around the first four, I'm happy to answer those before we move on. Okay, sounds like we're good. So the fifth type of funding is SB 551. That is for school, school fiscal year '21, so next school year, a little over 640,000. These block grant funds were for designated programs within innovation and prevention of remediation, as well as supplemental support for the operation of the school district. The intent of these funds, I believe, is when the other funding sources like pre-K and RGB3, or RBG3, excuse me, when they didn't fully cover those program purposes, we were able to use 551 funds to, to, to continue funding those programs. Then we have SB 467, also known as Zoom. In this pot of money, there was a little over $766,000. Zoom funds are non-competitive grant funds designed to support our EL students in attainment of language, English language proficiency and academic success. We do have to determine what programs will be in place for those students and report to the state specifically how we're using those funds to support our EL students. Then on this seventh type of funding is Title 1A. This is a little over $1.3 million. This is distributed also directly to sites via the district based on the percentage of their eligible students who fall in free and reduced lunch. So this, this fund is particularly for helping our students who are at most risk of, of failing or not performing in schools to, to help with them with academic supports. Anything that we spend or use Title 1A funds for has to have what they call asset evidence-based. So there, it's very restricted in terms of how we can use the funding. And again, it has to be focused on our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch within those individual sites. This is a federal fund, so we do also have to report, do federal reporting on those funds. Then on number eight, we have Title 2A funding. Title 2A funding is a little over 200, or exactly 200,000. In Title 2 Part A, those funds are designed to support districts in recruiting, preparing, training, and developing teachers and school leaders. Again, it's, Title funding is federal funding, so there's very specific parameters on how we can use those funds. And as you can see there, it's, it's particularly around professional learning. Then the last type of funding that we're gonna talk about this evening is special education or IDEA funding. I did not put a specific amount because, and within this particular funding vein, we do have general funds that support the special ed programming as well as IDEA funds. And those, the allocation is based on how many students we have that qualify for IEPs and what their individual IEPs state that they need in terms of services. So it's kind of a moving target a little bit each year and not something that we would reallocate to other needs, as it's important to make sure that we are meeting our federal requirements and state requirements under IDEA. So that is specifically to help our special education students provide free and appropriate public education to students with disabilities. So we can use those, that funding for specialized teachers, administrators, parapro's, materials, professional development, et cetera, that supports special education funding. So those are the nine types of special funding or grants that we're gonna talk about again this evening. It is not exhaustive. We have several different grant funds that we apply for. But in this particular case, I just wanted to mention the ones that we are usually using to, to support TOSA's and parapro positions within our district. So that's why I specifically picked out those ones to share with you. So before we move on to the position descriptions, are there any questions, again, about any of those funding sources, the grants or their purposes? Mr. Cassiope?
Yeah, this is Joe. On AB 289, the 437,000 for Read by Grade 3, for the literary, literacy specialist, is that the district position, or does that like, that's not per school, that's for the district position, I assume?
Those, literacy specialists are site-based positions. So every elementary school within our district has a literacy specialist. So is the pot of money, are you talking about, is it district? That is the, the amount that we awarded as a, as a total district. So that doesn't, and, and we, those funds do not get allocated directly to the school, but we do pay for the specific school services out of that one pot of money.
Right, okay, that's helpful, thank you.
This is Don, I have a quick question for you too.
Certainly.
SB 467, the Zoom, you didn't have a fiscal on that. Was that this fiscal year that we got 766,000?
Yes, I apologize for that. That was this year. If there's not a, and I didn't put that on Title 1A or Title 2 either, those, those are this year's amounts. That's correct, not next year's.
Thank you.
Okay, and this is Lowell. Just back to Joe's question on the literary specialist and the Read by Grade 3, that is not, the grant that was given to our district is not enough to cover the six literary specialists that we need because we have six elementary schools. Is that correct?
That's correct. They, it covers approximately 73, 74% of their salaries. So our schools, so part of the, the question about literacy specialists is within the Read by Grade 3 legislation. It does not require each elementary school to have its own literacy specialist. We could, if we so choose to, have a literacy specialist, for instance, bridge two separate schools. But I can say from previous practices that that doesn't typically work well. It limits services that can be given to the school. And so our schools, instead of sharing literacy specialists, have chosen to utilize other site-specific funds, which you'll see shortly, to, to pay for the other portion of those salaries. So in most cases, they used either SB 178 funds, sometimes Title funds to help support, and in some cases, we used SB 551 funds to, to pay the remainder of those salaries.
Thank you.
This is Stacy Wilkie. Are all these positions grant-funded?
Yes, they are. As we get further on in this document, I will show you exactly what is grant-funded and what is grant or general-funded, and what positions are placed at which schools. So we'll get into that in just a little bit.
Okay, so this, the grant funding from this is the correlation of the graphs in the back?
Correct. This is just an explanation of what those funding sources are and what the intents are for programs that are, are supported by those grants.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Richard, how you doing?
I'm doing well.
I'm sorry for being late. You know, I wanted to, just to clarify my mind, the 25% or so of the cost not covered by a grant under AB 289, that's covered by another grant, where's that general fund?
That is being paid for by another grant. And again, as we get a little bit further through this presentation, the last two pages actually specify which schools have which positions and what their funding mechanisms are. So I'll get into the specific details of how each school is funding, and, and Ed Services, my department as well, how we are funding our TOSA's and our parapro's.
And I'll just, the trustees know that I'm, I'm in presence now.
Okay, on the next portion of this document, I actually went ahead and included some position descriptions. We did cover this March 10th, but I thought it would be important to kind of put this together with the other information that I prepared for you. Just, and I didn't, again, put every position that we have in terms of the TOSA's, because I think some of them are really well-known around our district. For instance, Carrie Pryor is our professional learning coordinator. And she's paid for at a Title 2 funding, but, but most of our staff is very familiar with what she does. So I didn't put every position announcement in here. I simply put the ones that I felt the board had the most questions about. So looking at the first one, our curriculum assessment coordinators. There are four curriculum assessment coordinators. They are under my direct instruction, if you will, or, or authority. They are, I'm not gonna go through their whole job description because everyone has that, but they specifically are working around K-12 curriculum and assessment coordination. They facilitate and collaborate with multiple groups for the curriculum mission of our district, and they oversee all aspects of K-12 student assessment to include implementation, collection, review, and reporting of standardized test results. In other words, they work directly with me, Dr. Medina, and Mr. Hicks to, to ensure that we have consistent application of the curriculum framework and assessment framework that we have for all 10 schools. So they work directly with us, and then they, they collaborate with the site-specific TOSA's. These are district-wide TOSA's, so they're K-12. Then we have literacy specialists. There was a lot of questions. These are the folks that are being paid for under the Read by Grade 3 funding. Literacy specialists, there's one per elementary school, and they are under the direct supervision of the school principal, so they're site-specific. They're not district people, district-wide, they're site-specific folks. Their, their primary role is to coordinate the early literacy programming within elementary, within their site, so K3, as it's required by Read by Grade 3. They help, they coach teachers to implement strong literacy programs in the classroom. They do provide some intervention, one-on-one group interventions in many of the schools. And they manage like the, the intervention programming or intervention plans that have to be written for all of our students that are reading below grade level. So their, their role is a little bit different than, say, for instance, a reading interventionist that we'll talk about in a moment. But number three is a STEM coach. STEM coach is very similar to a literacy specialist, but on the opposite side. They are obviously highly qualified teachers in the area of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So in the schools that are lucky enough to have them, they're actually all Title 1-funded at the schools that have them. But they work hand-in-hand with the literacy coaches to help with curriculum and assessment and coaching of teachers within the elementary schools. Then you have a reading interventionist. Reading interventionists work with students 100% of the day. They actually do pull out programming and one-on-one interventions for students. So they, they, the reading interventionist would work closely with a literacy coordinator, a literacy specialist, but the reading interventionist is providing the schools that have them, and again, there's special funding for those schools. But the schools that have them, that is the, the person that does most of the interventions within that school. And then the last TOSA type that I have listed here is a Dean of Academic Intervention. This is a new TOSA role, actually, it's a administrator and special assignment role that our secondaries are looking at. They're all paying for them under SB 178 funds, which are site-specific funds. And it's, it's due to the nature of that grant funding. So if you remember, under the SB 178 funding, that is for our students who qualify for English language learner programming as well as free and reduced lunch, and they're in the lowest 25th percentile on their high-stakes assessments. Underneath that grant, they have to write intervention plans for those students and provide for explicit interventions to be done to help those students be academically successful. So this particular Dean of Academic Intervention is to help coordinate that program for each of the, it's Carson High School, Carson Middle, and Eagle Valley Middle, and to help make sure that those students are being put into the appropriate programming and then progress monitored to make sure that the supports and interventions that they're receiving are actually making a difference in terms of preparing them for those high-stakes tests and academic success. So those are the TOSA job positions. Like I said, we, we have other ones like LeAnn Morris, who is our Technology Integration Specialist. But again, most of you know exactly what LeAnn does, she's been in that role for a while. So I didn't add that. But is there any questions on these five roles that you have before I move on to our parapro descriptions? Okay, hearing that, I want to share with you that we do have, oh, sorry.
No, no, I was just teasing, I guess you did a great job.
Oh, well, thank you. Within our parapro ranks, I'm gonna share with you four different types of parapro's. And it's because these, these positions have different qualifications for them. So a paraprofessional, this is woman numeral six. A paraprofessional one is, the positions in this class are essentially there to help relieve teachers of certain instructional tasks and routine details. They can help with like small groups, if you're doing reading groups in the classroom, but they can also help a teacher with making copies or helping make phone calls home, that kind of thing. So it's just a general paraprofessional. Woman numeral seven is Kinder paraprofessionals. Kinder paraprofessionals are a, a special, a special group within parapro's, obviously because they're attached to Kinder parapro, or kindergarten programming. The reason why they're a separate class is because they are expected to work with students that do have special needs or English language learner needs. So they, they are a separate classification. Then we have a special education paraprofessional, and that is exactly what it seems. So within the special ed programming, sometimes our students require one-on-one aids. Our self-contained programs require program aids. And, you know, certain students that are, even if they're mainstreamed, might require parapro assistance for like note-taking, et cetera. So that particular classification, they're all driven by IEPs and I special ed programming needs. And then the last one of the parapro groups that we're gonna look at are ESL paraprofessionals. And again, that's a specialized group because those, those folks in that group have to pass a language proficiency assessment within Spanish. They have to be proficient Spanish speakers because they are helping our Spanish-speaking students within their academic courses. So they have to translate and interpret and be able to assist students with accessing high-level classes. You know, they might be taking chemistry or AP calculus, and that, that ESL parapro is to help with the language issues or supports for students. So it's an ESL parapro. Any questions on those four different types of paraprofessionals? Okay, seeing none, oh, sorry, Mr. Cassiope?
No, I was just saying, no questions.
Okay. On this next page, I put counts. So we currently have 184 total paraprofessionals within our district. 39 of those parapro's are general-funded. Those are the ones that you see in red. 145 are grant or special funding. I say grant or special funding because special ed funds are really what I'm referring to as special funding. So we have currently 24 total ESL paraprofessionals in our district. 13 of them are general-funded and 11 are grant-funded. We have seven pre-K paraprofessionals. We have three ESL pre-K paraprofessionals. We have 25 Kinder paraprofessionals. The Kinder paraprofessionals, as you know, are general-funded as well. We have 109 special education paraprofessionals. All of those are special-funded. We have 13 parapro ones. We have 13 parapro ones. All 13 of those are in grant funding. We do have two parent involvement facilitators. They fall within the parapro classification, but their role is much different. It's obviously, as the title designates, it's really to, to reach out to and work with families. And then we do have one bilingual parent engagement coordinator that is general-funded. And that is the bilingual parent engagement coordinator at Carson High School. Then we have 26 total TOSSAs in our district, so teachers on special assignment. All 26 of those are grant-funded. You can see their listing there. We have six literacy specialists, three STEM coaches, four K-12 curriculum assessment coordinators, one tech integration coordinator, one professional learning coordinator, one English language learner program coordinator, one CTE coordinator, one gifted and talented coordinator, one McKinney-Vento coordinator. We have three reading interventionists, one PHS intervention specialist. And I know Mr. Zona asked me, "Why you got to call out my intervention specialist there?" And I said, "Because you're the only one who has one with that title." So it gets to be known that it's the PHS one. And then three dean of academic interventions. So those are the type of TOSSAs that we have. I think what most of you are most interested in is the positions and funding by location. So the way that this is read, or the way you read this chart, for instance, is Borderwick Bray Elementary School, Roman numeral one, under this category, has three teacher-owned special assignments specific to that school and 23 parapros. So if you look at the first position, it says literacy specialist. Funding source one, that's the second column. Seventy-seven percent of the salary for that literacy specialist is being paid out of the Read by Grade III grant funds. As I stated, the, the elementary schools wanting to have their own literacy specialists and not have them split assignment then chose to, in this particular case, use SB 178 funds. So those are those site-specific funds for ELL and free and reduced lunch students who score in the lowest 25th percentile. So they use 23%, or they're paying for 23% of that salary out of those funds for the literacy specialist. They have the one STEM coach. It is 100%. That person is 100% Title I funded. They have a reading interventionist that is being paid 54.5% under SB 551 and then 45.5% under SB 178. They currently have two ESL parapros. Again, the way you read this is one of those ESL parapros in red is general-funded. The other one, under funding source two, is Title I, 100% funded. Then they have five kindergarten parapros. They are, all five of them, 100% funded under general, or general funding. They have 15 sped parapros that are being paid for from special education and IDA funds. And they have one Title, Title I funded parent involvement facilitator. So that's how you read that chart. Does anyone have questions on how you read the chart in terms of the funding sources? Okay, not seeing any questions. We'll look at Empire. Empire currently has three TOSSAs and 22 parapros. I'll give you a second to kind of read those to yourself or look through those, see if you have any questions about their staffing. This one's interesting because there's actually three funding sources. So if you look down at the first one in red, ESL parapros, they have four ESL parapros at Empire. And the way you read that is two of them are general-funded. One of them is Title I funding, and one of them is Zoom funding. So that's why there's three different funding sources there. Any questions about Empire? Okay, I'm going to move that up. Fremont Elementary School currently has three TOSSAs and 30 paraprofessionals. Again, you'll see their funding sources there. Fremont has a really large number of parapros, but the one thing to note about that is they do have self-contained programming there for special education. So they're typically, or they're a little higher than, than you might see in other elementary schools because of having the specialized education class, the self-contained.
Tasha, this is Lowell, and that was actually my question with Borderwick Bray, because I know they have a higher number of sped parapros than the other elementary schools. Is that because of the, isn't there a combined kindergarten class at Borderwick, or is that the pre-K program that's nearby? Or why is that, I guess?
Actually, student support, I have that listed under Student Support Services, but they do have an autism program. So there's quite a few parapros assigned to that autism program.
Okay, thank you.
This is-
This is Richard, just so you know that I think Borderwick has 25.
I'm sorry, Richard, I didn't understand.
I'm sorry, this is Richard. Borderwick has 25. Can you hear me now?
25 parapros?
25 plus.
Hello?
I can hear you.
No, they have 25 autism students.
Oh, yes, within the program, yes.
Borderwick Bray has 25 in the program.
Yeah, it's, it's a fairly large program. Did I hear another question?
Stacy, do they have a larger population?
It was really garbled. Could you say that again, Stacy?
And so does Borderwick Bray have the most population for autism?
They do have the elementary program for autism. So if a student requires a self-contained program, then they are placed at Borderwick Bray.
Thank you. And then my follow-up question is, why are the only parent involvement facilitators at Borderwick Bray and Empire?
It's because they have chosen to use their Title I funds to, to pay for those positions. And if you remember, Title I funding and SB 178 funding are funds that are given directly to the schools to support their school performance plan. So they have to write school performance plans to address the needs of the populations that are addressed under those two different funding sources. And then within that plan, typically it results in additional parapros, or in this particular case, parent, parent engagement facilitators. So that is how they, they wrote their plan.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. If we look at Fritch. Fritch Elementary School currently has two TOSSAs and 11 paraprofessionals. You can see their funding sources there. Seelager, the next one down, has one TOSA and nine paraprofessionals. I'm sure you can tell as we get into, for instance, our four and five-star schools, you start to see a little bit less support there, and that typically is because they actually qualify for less funding. So for instance, Seelager Elementary School is our five-star elementary school. They do not have any SB 178 funds because their students, it's a good thing, but their students performed too well that they didn't qualify for those funds. So in that particular case, we do take a look at that in, in my office. And Mrs. Dockery is excellent at working with me through these grants and these special funding programs. So we try to help support those schools in different ways. So we've used, for instance, 551 funds, SB 551 funds, to help Seelager be able to do some special programming. So like their after-school pirate program next year, we're going to be paying for out of SB 551 funds because they don't have title funds and they don't have SB 178 funds. So as you can see, the higher needs a school has, the more money they have available to them. The less needs they have, the higher functioning they are, less money they get to support their schools.
We actually have a question from the public, Tasha.
Mr. Wallace, you're unmuted.
Brian-
Can you all hear me?
Now we could hear you.
My apologies. When I set my phone down, it accidentally activated my raise-my-hand button.
All right, well, if you have any questions, you know, we will entertain them.
Okay. And then our last elementary school is Roman numeral six here. We have Mark Twain Elementary, and they have one TOSA and 22 parapros. And you can see the funding sources there. As you can tell, the schools are left to, to determine, again, how to use those specialized funding sources like Title I and SB 178. So in Mark Twain's case, they choose not, they chose not to have additional TOSSAs, and instead, they chose to have additional parapros to support their programming. So they used, for instance, title funds. You can see for their parapro ones, they have seven parapro ones. Five of them are Title I funded, and two of them are SB 178 funded. And that's how that school chose to support students versus having a teacher on special assignment.
So this is trustee Will. So all of the kinder parapros are general-funded, funded, correct?
Correct. So if you roll back to this, this page that I have listed, as you can see, currently out of the 184 paraprofessionals that we have in the district, only 39 of them are general-funded. And those 39 that are general-funded, 25 of them are kinder parapros. There are 13 ESL parapros and one bilingual parent engagement coordinator there, but the bulk of the 39 general-funded are the kinder parapros.
Thank you.
So and then taking a look at our, our secondary schools. Carson Middle School has one TOSA and 12 parapros. Eagle Valley Middle School has one TOSA, 18 parapros. And with EVMS, they do have two self-contained programs as well, which is why their number of parapros exceeds that of Carson Middle. Next year, however, we are moving one of the special programs from EVMS over to Carson Middle as we're, as we're shifting our students over. So you will see a shift there of the parapros because the parapros will also go over to Carson Middle to support the program being placed there. And then for Carson High School, they have one TOSA and 30 paraprofessionals. And for Pioneer High School, they currently have one TOSA and one parapro.
Tasha, this is Richard.
Yes, Richard?
I have a question. A lot of the elementary schools have three TOSSAs. And I noticed once you get into middle school and the high school, they chose only to have one. Is that their choice? And I'm wondering why the elementary schools were needing TOSSAs versus the middle school and high school.
So it goes down to funding again right now. Keeping in mind that our only elementary schools that have that many TOSSAs are, are Title I elementaries. And they've chosen to use those title funds to pay for those teachers on special assignment. The only secondary school that we have that is a title school is Pioneer High School. So neither EVMS, CMS, or Carson High School, they, they don't have those funds available to those schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then as you get further down, I do have Student Support Services. So this is where, for instance, the pre-K program for Borderwick Bray is housed in Student Support Services as well as our early childhood program. They do not have any TOSSAs at Student Support Services. They do have six parapros to support their programs. And then the last one you see there is the Ed Services Department. So we have 10 TOSSAs, district-wide TOSSAs, and no parapros because we don't have specific students that are assigned that we would have parapros for. And then, of course, it shows you the funding source for those folks. So for our ELA math and science assessment, curriculum assessment coordinators, we're paying for them with SB 551 funds for social studies, technology, and CTE programming. And they're not in order there, I apologize, but they are being paid for AB 309. The reason why they're being paid for from that fund is those are the programs that, or the, the projects that we had written in our GTLF grant that wasn't funded and was rolled over into 309. We do have a professional learning coordinator, again, paid for out of Title II-A because those funds are specific to professional learning. An ESL coordinator paid for out of Zoom, again, EL designative funding. Gate program coordinator paid for out of Gate funding. I didn't put that in the grants in the front because, again, I thought that was one that really wasn't in question. And then we do have Peggy Sweetland, who is Children in Transition Program Coordinator. She's paid for half out of a CIT grant that is specific to that program, and the other half out of Title I. And then when you look at the CTE program coordinators, you'll see to the side again Perkins funding. That is, Perkins funding is specific to CTE. So all those, most of those funds are very specific to those programs or those types of projects. Any questions on anything that I've presented to you or any discussion that you would like to have?
Yeah, this is Richard again. I was wondering, are the TOSSAs evaluated by their principals? And if so, what standards are being used for their evaluations? And I'm wondering, are those their certified teachers that have to be evaluated in the Nevada Evaluation Performance Framework since they're certified teachers, like I said?
So the site-based teachers on special assignment are evaluated by their site principals. So if they're, if they're specific, like in the elementary schools, the ones that are specific to those sites or even the, the academic deans at the secondary, they are evaluated by their principals. TOSSAs currently are not evaluated on the NEPF. They are currently evaluated on the old, what we used to call the Charlotte Danielson Framework under individual plan, professional plan. And it's because we don't have a state evaluation form for that classification yet. I know that's, I believe in the planning stages, but as the state has been rolling out different evaluations, they, they've been doing different ones each year. So they would actually be considered a special classification. When it comes to the Ed Services Department, I evaluate seven of them. And then, so I evaluate the K-12 curriculum coordinators, the professional learning coordinator, the integration, technology integration specialist, and the CTE coordinator. Mrs. Dockery evaluates the Gate coordinator. And Dr. Austin evaluates the EL coordinator. Thinking I might be forgetting one, but it's either me or one of those ladies who evaluates them.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
This is Lowell. I just wanted to thank you very much for putting this together because it's very thorough and very clear. And I really appreciate having this information like this. And I just, my question back earlier with the Read by Grade III and the literary specialist are just, I think that that particular grant, when we do get it, highlights how the state has put forth an unfunded or inadequately funded mandate. So I think that's something to keep in mind when they fire, when they require teachers in certain positions. That they need to, that that legislation should come with adequate funding as well.
I appreciate that, trustee Crossman. I know Mrs. Dockery and I went to a meeting with our state folks earlier in this year to have that very specific discussion. It's very difficult in districts, as you've stated, when they make a mandate and it's not fully funded. So I think, again, that's part of, part of the reason, I believe, they came out with the SB 551 funds this year is noting that they, they had put out mandates that they expected us to, to adhere to and/or, again, cut funding in different areas like pre-K. That was devastating when we received that reduced amount for pre-K. Pre-K, again, right now, our grant for that is about $800,000. It costs us over $1 million to run that program for pre-K. So it's an incredibly expensive program that, that we've had to make up funding in other places. Well, I'm glad you all enjoyed this handout. It was really, I know I was receiving a lot of questions, not just from all of the trustees, which I appreciated, but also our principals and some teachers. And I, and I agreed at our last meeting when I was, it was suggested by a couple of our board members that we try to figure out a way to really educate our stakeholders on, on what these roles are, how they support our students, how we're funding them, and, and really try to, to clear up some of that ambiguity. try to clear up some of that ambiguity and confusion. So that was the intent of this document. I hope it provided that clarity. And again, happy to answer any questions if you have any other ones. Otherwise, that is the conclusion of my presentation.
So I do have a comment, just kind of a wondering. You know, I notice we do have a lot of special ed paraprofessionals in there. And, you know, obviously, funding doesn't cover all of those expenses. And so I just wonder, has there been discussions with our student support services staff about guidance on how we're making those decisions? I know that it's a team-based decision. It just seems like in some schools, we have a lot of PARAPROs in those sites.
I do know Dr. Lennox is working diligently to really review this this year. She's obviously, as you all know, new to that position. So she has been working with Mr. Feeling and myself to really kind of dive into what positions we have at which schools and the needs of the students and if we can be a little bit more fiscally thrifty, I don't want to say responsible, but thrifty, I guess, with meeting the needs of our students. So I know that that is something that we're looking at really, really closely throughout this year and moving into next year.
Perfect, thank you. And I thought this report was really well done. It was very clear, and I think it will clarify a lot of information for people. And I think this is what people were looking for, is just kind of a concise document that shows what these positions are, how they're funded, and what they're being used for.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to recess until 7:00, so the public who is joining us at 7:00 is here on time. So we will be in recess until 7:00. It's 7:00 PM. I'll resume this meeting of the Carson City School Board. Today is April 7th, and I am in the community center. The trustees are attending remotely, so I'll do a roll call, starting with trustee Ramirez. Lupe, are you on?
Sorry, I was on mute, sorry, here.
No problem. Trustee Wilkie McCullough. Stacy, I know you're on. Are you just muted? Okay, we'll come back to Stacy. Laurel?
I'm here.
Thank you. Good evening. Donald Creeny?
I'm here.
Good evening, Donald. Trustee Varner?
I'm here.
Good evening. Trustee Cassioppo?
I'm here.
Good evening, Joe. Thank you for covering for me.
You bet.
And Stacy?
I'm here, I'm just having problems with the mute button.
Are you just trying to be a diva? Be the best for last? Save the best for last? Good evening, Stacy.
You're my past president, we got to get our yas-yas some way.
Yeah, I hear you're wearing fancy socks today as well.
Yes, I am.
So the third item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. This is a possible action.
This is Joe. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the agenda as submitted.
Trustee Wilkie, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Joe, second by Stacy. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? If you're viewing on, in public remotely and you would like to have public comment, you may use the raise your hand feature and we will be happy to give you an opportunity. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any a point?
Aye.
Motion passes. So the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Walker. Good evening to our trustees and also good evening to the public. Certainly want to say thanks and hello to our staff. We miss them, we miss seeing them every day, but are very grateful for the work that they're accomplishing. And acknowledge that by asking all of our staff members to work in a slightly different capacity, and in some cases, a very significant different capacity, just want to recognize them for the hard work and for the contributions that they're making to our schools. I'd like to also report that our schools are remaining closed. And we are still able to do business. I want to thank our tremendous IT program and department. They have made it possible for our administrative staff to connect their mobile phones or their home phones to the numbers that we have at the schools. And so when we do have calls from the public, those calls are being transferred to the phones of our folks who are working remotely. And so we're able to still keep up with and do the work of the schools, but from remote locations. So thanks to those folks. I also want to report that we're still assembling and distributing meals, and that seems to be going well. And we'd like to also thank our staff that have any part to do with that additional work effort. We appreciate their work. I'd like to report that spring break will begin on April the 10th and will run through the 17th of April. During that time, all of our buildings will remain closed, and that will include, for this week, the district office. We're able to also do some of our work from home, and so consequently, we're going to close the district office and provide some extra opportunity for that building to be thoroughly sanitized and for our staff to get a little break from the everyday routine that's happening through the district office. During spring break, there will be no meals, and there will also be no academic support or packets being delivered from the teachers. So that break is going to be considered as if it were a typical school year. We don't have those services in operation during our spring break. So I just want to alert the public that you won't hear from our teachers and you also won't be having the opportunity to receive those meals as typically done during the non-holiday portions of the school year. Those meals and academics, however, will resume on April the 20th. So once our time has passed for spring break, please be aware that school will start up again as usual. Governor Sisalak's 30-day business and school closure expires on April the 30th. So please be watching as we get closer to that time for additional information. The school will resume only on approval from the governor, and that's based on the state health conditions. And so please, along with the rest of the state, watch your news. And certainly, we will reach out from the district office. And you'll also likely hear from your individual schools with information about whether or not school will be opened at that time or whether we'll remain on some sort of a remote learning platform. I'd also like to let our community know that the senior projects are being completed by our seniors, as expected, but with a little different outcome. The seniors are completing their portfolios, as usual. Sometimes you may have seen those all collected in binders. But instead of the students making a presentation, a verbal presentation to our community partners, as has been done in the past, because of current conditions, we will not be having that process. Instead, our seniors will be making their presentation to individual English teachers. And I'll leave that up to Carson High School to make sure that that process is organized and is carried through. Getting close to the end of my report here, April 28th is a date when we would have typically held a school board meeting, but based on our current conditions, that meeting has been canceled per board action at our last meeting. And just to let the public know, the district continues to use virtual tools, as in this meeting, to do our internal business. There's a lot of things that are going on. If you think about the many years that we have worked as an organization and as an industry, we have developed a lot of processes and events and meetings. Many of those things are happening virtually now, and all of those things are having a slightly new twist. And so there's a lot of decision-making, there's a lot of movement in how we're doing business. And we appreciate everyone's contribution to that effort and are here still to serve. And so with that, President Walker, I'll turn the time back over to you unless the board has questions of me directly.
Do we have any questions from the trustees? Do we have any questions from the trustees? Rich, I just want to say that in addition to thanking all of our staff, I also want to thank you and your entire team, because your work has all changed as well. And so, I know you're all there, long hours, and kind of facing some uncertain times yourselves, and so you've risen to the challenge, and we appreciate it as a board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to board reports, and we'll start with Trustee Ramirez. You may be muted, Lupe.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
So, I have no regrets for my school, but I do want to say to Mr. Stokes, thank you for your leadership. And I have been talking to students that we're recruiting for, you know, them to go to college, and I have heard nothing but really good things about their transition going online. So, everyone is doing an amazing job in keeping these students on track to be able to graduate from high school and be ready for college. And other than that, I hope everyone stays healthy. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Lupe. Stacy?
This is Trustee Wilkie. I'd like to do a shout-out to Dan Davis. He's had some great stuff out there. We've been covered a lot by the news with the TV and the newspapers, and I'm just thankful that he has done the job that he has done. And I really want to give him a pat on the back. And then, a shout-out to the Carson High staff for coming up with creative ways for the prom king and queen voting. That was kind of fun to watch, and we all got to watch that online. So, that was nice, because that's kind of a big deal when you're a senior. So, to have it be brought up and even followed through was nice. I thought that was great. And then, just to the Nevada Superintendent of Education, she's been really good, I think, with a lot of the information that's come down, especially to us trustees, and the information that she's given to, and the direction that she and the governor have given us has been nice during this chaotic time. So, and of course, staff and teachers and nutrition people. I don't know how we're all getting through this, but I'm so glad we live in Carson City, because everybody's been doing a great job.
Thank you, Stacy. Laurel? You may be muted, Laurel.
I know. It just, for some reason, I can't get my mute button to the menu to pop up with my fingers, so it takes a little bit. I'm like pushing, pushing, pushing.
Thank you, Mike.
And just for, for Fritch and Fremont Elementary, I really don't have any report other than, I just want to thank the staff at our elementary school for all the effort that they put forth. I have two elementary kids. They have packets that are grade-level appropriate for them, and I just appreciate the work that went into that at the school site for the, the grade, the grade-level teachers to get together and to give them great, appropriate work. I've heard that has not been the case in all the districts around the state, and so I'm really grateful, because there's a different level of learning that fourth and fifth graders and kindergartners and second graders do. And also, for Fremont, I do want to share some good news that Dr. Ward shared that her teachers had 98% consistent access to students. So, they've really worked hard to make sure that they're reaching out to contact all of their kids, and I know my kids have been contacted by all of their teachers as well. And so, I just, I'm so appreciative of all of the effort that has gone into this. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Laurel. Donald?
Don Corini. I have a message from Dr. Lee Conley, Eagle Valley Middle School Principal, or he's the Eagle Valley Middle School Principal. "My teachers and support staff, as well as district office personnel, including curriculum coordinators, are rocking this digital approach. The Eagle Valley staff is so positive, willing to try new approaches and programs in order to communicate with and support our students, and putting in many hours of preparation and support. This is why our district is outperforming other districts and still actually providing solid education for our students. Unfortunately, it's not all wonderful. Some frustration, maybe a lot of frustration. There are parents and students who just aren't performing, regardless of how many times and how much effort we put into communicating with and supporting them. There are numerous parents, though, who have either communicated their pleasure with our teachers or are supporting kids and posted on our Eagle Valley Facebook page. We miss the kids. We'll keep up our hopes that we get to see them before the year ends." And that's my report from Lee Conley.
Thank you, Don. Richard?
From Fort Worthwood, Ray. Their teachers and parapros continue to work hard to educate the students. I know they're passing out a lot of information. They're in contact with students on a daily basis on most occasions, and the teachers and staff are working very hard. Mr. Crittington, their computer teacher, he's putting together and organizing a family photo message from all the teachers, where the teachers are holding up different signs that they're going to present to all the students and parents of the Fort Worthwood Brave, and that'll be coming up shortly. It's just kind of a way to send a message to the kids. I know that they miss the kids and wish that they were back in school also. And the teachers also want to thank their TOSs and the district TOSs, but especially Amy Lottman and Lindsay Evans, for the work preparing the next remote learning packets. I know that a lot of work has been put into preparing those packets to be given out to the kids, and I think that they'll be providing a very good product for the kids. From Carson Middle School, I really don't have a report, but I know that their teachers are working very hard. They're sending out a lot of information, a lot of instruction pack, or not package, but information out to the children to do. I know this because my granddaughter is going to school at Carson Middle School, and she's getting the information every day, and she's in contact with the teachers, and it appears that they're doing a very good job keeping in contact with the children. And I know that they're all missing the kids. I've talked to several of the teachers. They're missing the kids, and they're just hoping things get back to normal before long also. And that will conclude my report."
Thank you, Richard. Joe?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. No specific report, but like others have done, I want to really state my appreciation for all of our staff, from the executive board to site administrators, teachers, and all the staff. Everybody is working in a capacity that none of us anticipated having to do, and they're doing a great job. I live with two teachers, and, you know, they're still doing all the things you would expect of our teachers. They're, you know, they're preparing. They're up early, talking to the parents and the students. They're even doing Zoom chats just to see the kids' faces and talk to them and keep them all motivated. And so, everybody's really going out of their way, as are the parents as well. Parents, some are in a really hard position right now, and they've got a lot of things to worry about. And now, asking them to put a substantial part of their day towards their kid's education, while important and necessary, you know, it's one more level of stress. But I think in light of this, you know, I'm not a fan of the term essential. I think it's kind of a poorly chosen term, but when I think about teachers and educators in general, talk about an essential group of people. So, my hat's off to all of them. And last, I just want to say for the high school, I want to just express, for the seniors, how much I sympathize with what they're going through. This is hard for everybody, but to be a senior in high school and have your year basically cut in half, and to miss out on all the final things you get to do as a high school student, I just want to let them know we're thinking about them. I know some personally, and they're a great group of kids, and this is a tough start, or a tough ending to their school year, but hopefully, like you said, we can see their faces again soon and get everybody back on track to their next path. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe. So, I just have a few things, so if you'll bear with me. So, first of all, just apologize. I too, as an educator, am getting used to working essentially non-stop, get homework some more. So, I was at home working, and luckily, Carrie Pryor sent me a text saying basically, "If you're not going to show up to the meetings, what good are you?" And then, I checked my phone, and I have a phone message or two from Renee Cortez, and I hear that even LeAnn Morris was saying, "Where's Mike?" So, thank you, everybody, for looking out for me. I just got carried away with my work, which is not an excuse, but thank you, Joe, for covering for me. And, teachers, I feel your pain. I know what it's like to work all day, every day. And with that, I just kind of wanted to go to the next thing. And some of the questions that are bubbling up that we're all getting from teachers, from parents, from students involve so much of the stuff that we don't have answers for, because this is all so unforeseen. And we're doing our best to figure out grading. We know that our students are missing really important milestones in their lives, and if we could change that, we certainly would, and we'll do whatever we can to mitigate that when we do return. But we just want you to know, we understand that this is a lot of sacrifice, and I think we need to work together as a community. So, parents, give your teachers time to get the technology under their thumbs and plans put in place, because they literally had a day or two to wake up and change the way they're doing their job. Teachers, give parents patience. They're not used to talking to you every day. And so, it's going to get, they're going to need to get used to hearing back from you and having that two-way communication. And I think that if we work together, we will be fine. And so, that is one of the things that I wanted to stress. And another thing that we're missing out on is, one of the things that I really wanted to do this year was streamline our employee of the year process. And I wanted to make sure that it was a process that really highlighted the value of our best of the best. And so, certainly, with the limitations we're under now, we're not going to be able to do that at this point. But for those who are selected as employee of the year for their different sites and their different job classifications, we will do something to celebrate your success. It certainly will look different this year, but if nothing else, I wanted to make sure that we, as a board, recognize these people, and I wanted to read their names and positions into the record, and I just want them to know that we are so proud of you and thank you for your hard work. So, we have Chanel Kavner. She's an algebra and geometry teacher at Carson High School. Robin Blues, who is an account clerk 2 at Carson High School. Whitney Tines, counselor at Carson Middle School. Jenny Ayala, paraprofessional ESL at Carson Middle School. Lois Lenahan, teacher on special assignment at Eagle Middle School, Eagle Valley Middle School. Denise DiMarzo, administrative secretary at Eagle Valley Middle School. Tara Horniman, physical education teacher at Al Seelager Elementary School. Tormentor when I was a teacher, and I often call her the sister I never wanted. Karen Schaefer, office specialist at Al Seelager Elementary School. Jessica Dunbar, second-grade teacher at Borderwick Bray Elementary School. Kathleen Childs, paraprofessional 2 at Borderwick Bray Elementary School. Teresa Marler, first-grade teacher at Empire Elementary School, and classmate way back in the day at UNR, so go Teresa. Carolyn Higora, office specialist at Eagle Valley or Empire Elementary School. Carol Suzie Owens, second-grade teacher at Fremont Elementary School. Mayellen Harriho, paraprofessional ESL at Fremont Elementary School. Christine Donaldson, kindergarten teacher at Fritch Elementary School. Don Bateman, paraprofessional 4 at Fritch Elementary School. Tara Babula, Carson teach, or computer teacher extraordinaire at Mark Twain Elementary School. Cassandra Blankenship, office specialist at Mark Twain Elementary School. John Corbett, math teacher, Pioneer High School. Karen Wayne, cook baker at Pioneer High School. Carrie Pryor, TOSA implementation specialist, cognitive coach for Student Support Services. And when we do have that celebration, Carrie, you're going to need to pick a new walk-up song, because we're not going to do this recycle business. So, you're going to need to keep it fresh. Sandra Guzzetta, paraprofessional 4 at Student Support Services. Michael Luke, bus driver trainer for transportation. Gary Jones, skilled building maintenance for operations. Gina Hines, administrative secretary 2 for the district office. And of course, Deanne Foley is the school nurse or health professional of the year, and Paula Zona is our administrator of the year. So, certainly, you all have contributed to our school in a number of ways that we probably can't thank you enough, but we do appreciate all you do, and we look forward to an opportunity to celebrate with you. Onto other things. At Seelager Elementary School, I've seen several fun videos that have been posted for families and staff members, and I love how Mr. Butler and Mrs. Zona are keeping it light and keeping things positively rolling forward at Seelager. So, good job, Pirates. And trustees, I participated again in what's become a weekly phone call with all the school board presidents through NASB. And really, the big issue that everybody's facing with right now is, with these limitations, we're all operating in a bubble, it seems, and superintendents are doing their best to keep the board informed of what's going on, and trustees are hopefully supporting the administration and doing their best. And so, it's really just that, at these times, we're all struggling with having real clear, open lines of communication while also maintaining open meeting law requirements. And so, if we get to a situation where you're feeling like you're not getting enough information, or we need to kind of open some lines of communication to share a little bit more information amongst ourselves, please reach out to me or Mr. Stokes, and we'll be happy to kind of put some plans in place to get you the information you are requiring. And that will, that concludes my report. So, the next item on the agenda, we have association reports. Do we have any association reports? Okay. Brian Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, Mr. Stokes, Mr. Delphin, and district staff and employees. I'm Brian Wallace, OCA President. I would like to thank everyone and just echo all the trustees, as to say also, from our ESP staff through all of our licensed professionals, and being able to handle all the changes that came upon us in almost the past four weeks at this point. I'd also really like to thank Dr. Delphin for the work he's been able to do with association as we continue to navigate NDE's guidance when it comes to aspects of our evaluations, and what we can do that's going to be in the best interest of all of our licensed staff, since so many of us were, you know, caught off-guard as we tried to move forward with our student learning goals, and, you know, forgetting things in the classroom that we realized we did need after all, and everything that comes after the fact as we go through something like this. As already stated, luckily, we are in Carson City. We're small, compact, both geographically and for our size, so I think that has helped us tremendously. And then, with all of our working relationships with Mrs. Fuson also, as we navigate student needs and Student Support Services, and our ELL departments, gate coordinators, and everyone. If it could be easy, I think this is what easy looks like for us. And when it comes to what's being provided for our students in Carson City, I met with most of our local leaders for NSCA earlier this evening, and once again, hands down, Carson City's leading the way. We're continuing to try to provide continuing education, including introducing new content for many of our classes. for many of our classes. And it's going as well as we could expect. Um, it's been a, it's actually been a really good learning experience. It's an unfortunate learning experience, um, but it has generated lots of conversation as we continue to move forward after spring break. So, once again, thank you, everyone in Carson City, for your patience as we continue to work to educate your children.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. We also have Kerry Finn. Kerry, go ahead. You might be on mute, Kerry.
Can you guys hear me now?
Now, we could hear you. So, we missed anything you said before this.
Okay. Thank you, President Walker. Um, good evening, President Walker and trustees. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to, um, Mr. Stokes, Dr. Delphin, Mrs. Fuson for listening to my emails, the questions and concerns that the ESPs had. Um, they got back to me in a timely manner, um, and we are just rolling with the punches and everyone's coming together. Uh, and that's all I just want to say is thank you. Um, what a great school district we have. We're all coming together to work, um, hard for our students. So, that's pretty much it. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Kerry. We appreciate you and everybody who works in your bargaining unit. Do we have any, anyone else on there? So, we will move on to public comments. And so, I have a few, um, disclaimers to read. First of all, we have received a warning from the FBI that there have been people infiltrating these types of meetings when inappropriate content. And, um, we will, um, pause microphones if there is anything inappropriate. And if needed, we will recess until the situation is, um, addressed. And so, other than that, just some normal disclaimers we make. Comments will be accepted through telephonic participation or through visual, virtual participation via email. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of the board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items. And members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such matter until the matter is placed on the agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other if participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and to not simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. And I just want to remind the public, if you would like to, um, make voice public comment, please use the raise your hand feature. Trustees and public, uh, we may take a brief recess to now enable people who are emailing in comments to, um, get those sent in to us in a timely manner. So, do we have any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to item number eight. Discussion and possible action on an agreement between the Carson City Schools District and Carson City, uh, continuing the school resource officers program at the school district and through which the city and school district will split the personnel costs of three SROs, approximately $430,000, $438.81 for fiscal year 2021. This is for possible action. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Walker, members of the board. Uh, I'm pleased to be able to bring this matter before the board. Since about 2015, we have enjoyed having police officers in our schools. And, uh, this initially began when Sheriff Furlong wrote for a grant that, um, provided some seed money to put, uh, school resource officers in our buildings. And, uh, over time, we have been able to, uh, really come to depend on these individuals in our buildings. Uh, according to the details of the grant, uh, eventually, we came to a place where the, the dollars essentially dried up that we were receiving from the federal government. And it came down to one year where the school district and the city partnered again by paying half of the cost of these three, uh, school resource officers. And, uh, it was very successful. And, uh, we're at a place now where we are desirous to keep this program going. At the most recent Board of Supervisors meeting on April the 2nd, the inter-local agreement that's before us tonight was approved by the Board of Supervisors. The board had, uh, asked that there be an addition to this document, which essentially asked that a, uh, combined report be made to the individual boards or if it had, if we're able to set it up, it seems, uh, the kind of thing that we would do at one of our joint meetings. Uh, but certainly, we were in favor of that. And we'll be working with our staff to make sure that the details and the data that the Board of Supervisors have asked, uh, to be presented in this, um, in this presentation and this report. Uh, and we'll, we'll make sure that we have that data captured and ready for presentation. So, I am, uh, hoping that the trustees agree with the school personnel. This has been a program. Uh, thanks to Sheriff Furlong and his staff. They've been tremendous to work with. I believe we've gotten, uh, better. We feel safer. Uh, it's a, it's a great partnership. And, uh, it would be my recommendation that the board approve this as we have, uh, provided in our tentative budget for the amount of approximately $300, or $230,000 to be the school district's portion of funding the school resource officers going forward. So, a yes vote tonight by the trustees would allow, uh, you, President Walker, and me to sign this document. We'll then make sure that the document is signed by the appropriate, uh, signatories from the city. And we can move forward with, um, another period of time under which we will be able to employ our school resource officers.
And I'll just remind the trustees, I'll go down and kind of do a roll call and ask for comments. And then, um, before we take any action, I'll sweep back and ask for any comments that have come up. So, if, uh, Lupe, do you have any questions or Mr. Stokes? You might be on mute still, Lupe.
Okay. No questions. I was just saying, I am in full support of this partnership, so, um, no additional questions.
Thank you. Stacy, do you have any questions? You have muted yourself, so if you're talking, we're not hearing you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Now, I can hear you. Yes.
Okay. So, after watching the trustee or the Board of Supervisors meeting, I understand that the language that they, that the Board of Supervisors wanted to put in was, uh, paragraph nine about FERPA and the confidentiality of data. And that they wanted to add language so that we have a reporting, um, every annual, probably at one of our joint meetings. Is that the understanding you have, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, trustee Wilkie. Yes, actually, in, uh, paragraph eight, it identifies the items that the Board of Supervisors asked to be captured. And then, in item B of that same paragraph, it states a, uh, an expectation to make a report. And as Sheriff Furlong and I have had an opportunity to talk about that, we're both in agreement that that is something we'd be happy to do. And, uh, of course, um, there is that, that function between being a police officer and being a police officer in schools. And, uh, we've been very fortunate, uh, with the support of Sheriff Furlong. Our SROs are able to receive national training and, of course, the part that is important to us. And we, we actually, uh, perform this role of, of teaching about our Family Education Rights and Privacy Act to our SROs so that there's a clear understanding of what their role is as a school resource officer and especially as that protected information is maintained and protected.
Thank you. And also, I'd like to tell the other trustees, if you have a chance to look at Sheriff Furlong's data that he performed at the meeting, it's very interesting and very enlightening, but showing how the SROs have really helped the, uh, I don't know, the progress of, of our school, our student body, for that matter, if you get a chance to see that. It answered a lot of the questions that the supervisors had at our joint meeting, so I think it's really important. Um, and just for the public knowledge, to remember that the two officers that we got grant funding for in this last legislative session were not part of the three that we already had hired. So, I just want to have that stated on the record for everyone. But if you do get a chance, if you can go to Carson.org and look at Sheriff Furlong's presentation and see the data, it's very enlightening.
Thank you, Stacy. Laurel, do you have any questions?
Um, I do. I just want to start off by saying I am fully in support of this program and the partnership. My question is, with our schools all having been closed for the last three weeks and for the next three weeks, are these officers currently working full-time for the city, um, including the two that we fund through our grants? Could you answer that, Mr. Stokes, if you know?
Thank you, trustee Crossman. The school resource officers are under the direct supervision of the sheriff's office. And so, even though they are working full-time, uh, as, uh, under whatever assignment the sheriff has them working on, if there is an event that involves a juvenile, then our school resource officers are called in directly to serve in that capacity. And if there are investigations or if there are other events to which, um, there's a call-out, our school resource officers, to the extent that they're on that shift, are able to, uh, be the reporting, uh, officers. And so, they're still, uh, keeping in contact with our students and, uh, but just it, it looks a little different based on where we are today.
Thank you. I just, um, just thinking of our last joint meeting and, and the concerns that we had with, that were expressed by some of the Board of Supervisors, um, on our joint use agreements and just, you know, I'm, I, the SROs are still working with the schools, but not in the same manner that they were before. So, I just hope the city remembers that when they, um, start wanting us to pay for using the pool for the high school needs or, or those type of things, that we're still helping out in this situation.
Thank you, Laurel. I think those are great comments. Dawn, do you have any questions for Mr. Stokes?
Uh, Don Corini, actually, just a comment. I did see that, uh, the Carson City Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to engage in this partnership, and I just wanted to thank them for it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dawn. Richard, do you have any questions for Mr. Stokes?
Not really any questions. I support the program. And as I read this, uh, document, if we wanted to get really picky on it, on page three, on five B, where it's a second sentence, CC SO will make reasonable efforts. I think there should be a, just a two there, to send an SOR to the advanced training school is all. It does run minor, minor point. But other than that, uh, I support the program. And just to clarify, the $230,000 debt is appropriate this year is out of the grant. Is that correct?
Trustee Varner, this is Richard Stokes. The $230,000 would be from our general fund to help, uh, pay for our portion, uh, of this particular program. And that's for three, uh, school resource officers. It's the other two that trustee Wilkie was talking about that's paid for in, uh, in its entirety from grant funding.
And did you mean the $430,000? Because I'm not sure, is our share 430,000 plus or, or do we split the 430 between us and the city?
Thank you, trustee Crossman. This is Richard Stokes. The 460,000, I think, that amount is the full amount for the program. So, that amount is halved, half being paid by the city and then half being paid by the school district. So, we've budgeted approximately $230,000 for our share of the costs for three resource officers.
And, Mr. Stokes, just to be clear with the agenda, it's 430,000. So, you were right the first time. Joe, do you have any questions for Mr. Stokes?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Um, that was one question I had was, was the funding. I'm, I'm in full support of the program. I think it's been a great program and a great partnership. Um, but it looks like the total is 430,000. So, when we say our share is approximately 230, is our share really approximately like 215,000? And we're just talking general numbers or is there, there seems to be a $30,000, um, seems to be a $30,000 discrepancy total. I just wanted to make sure I understand.
Trustee Cassiopoul, this is Richard Stokes. I'm gonna turn the microphone over to Mr. Fueling.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Uh, trustee Cassiopoul, so the, the number that we have in the budget currently, um, is the number that we have used over the last, uh, two years as we've taken on the full cost of the grant. Um, and so, that 230,000 has represented, uh, approximately what, uh, our portion is. Um, here, the, the sheriff's office, when they compiled and, and when new officers come on and go, um, the, the total of those costs change with the officers that they're actually paying for. So, my, my assumption is the officers that they used to come up with the $430,000 number represent just a, a change somewhere in, in one of the officer's costs. So, while in the, the past, we expected the program to cost about $460,000 in total, uh, of which we would pay half of that. Um, and, and I should say, too, the number when we were preparing our budget, um, was this prior 230,000. It looks as though in the future that, that cost may go down slightly.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. And, and I did notice that the, the initial term of the contract, it's a five-year agreement, but it can be revisited annually. Um, and, you know, I know we at work sign a lot of long-term contracts and budgets start at a certain level and then with salaries and everything go up. So, I think budgeting the $230,000 certainly makes sense. And if it's less expensive for us, great. But I have no other questions or comments on the agreement. Again, I, I'm in full support and I appreciate the partnership.
Thank you, Joe. So, I'll, um, open it up to any trustee who had a follow-up question. Anything come to mind after their, their comments? All right. Hearing none, I will, um, do we have any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Oh, this is Don Corini. I'll, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Thank you, Dawn.
I move that the Carson City I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the agreement between the Carson City School District and the Carson City, and Carson City, to continue the school resource officers, the SRO program, in the school district, which the city and the district will split personnel costs of three SROs for an approximate amount of $430,000, 400, I'm sorry, $430,000, $438.81 for fiscal year 2021.
This is Joe Cassiopoul. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Dawn, a second by Joe. Any discussion by the trustees? So trustees, this is a, a time, I'm going to take a five-minute recess so that if anybody wants to email in public comment, that we allow that time. So we will take a five-minute recess.
And then, Mike, just so I'm clear, and then we'll, we'll continue the vote after the recess?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the public who is emailing in has an opportunity to submit their, their comments or questions.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Any follow-up comments by trustees? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Don Corini, aye.
Sorry, everybody. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. The next item on the agenda is item number nine, presentation and discussion on tentative budget for the Carson City School District for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And Mr. Feeling, this is discussion only.
Thank you, President Walker. Good evening, trustees. Tonight, I'll be presenting a little bit of a summary of the tentative budget. The tentative budget document was included in your packets. This document, the tentative budget, is a requirement by NRS that we put together kind of our initial look at what the budget may be for the coming fiscal year. This document is, this item, again, it, to remember, is for discussion only. This is not a document that requires any type of approval. It's just an expectation that, I guess, we are getting started in the process, we have started putting numbers together, and then we submit this to the Department of Taxation and Department of Education for their review. Again, the item is for discussion only. And I, I think it's important, too, just at this point, to understand that all of the changes that we have discussed at previous meetings are included in this budget. So again, it's just bringing all that into the larger budget document, into numbers that the state would like to see. So the budget timeline, back in February, we received our preliminary revenue projections. At the, on March 25th, the Department of Taxation provided us final revenue projections. This is for local school support tax, government services tax, and ad valorem property tax revenues. I will note, I have this highlighted in red, that this was specifically the ad valorem property tax revenues. I'll talk about it more in a bit. Was, is a, is a number that we're still, we, we are still looking at and having respective groups that develop those numbers for us look at. Just, it, it was not what we were expecting, so we're trying to get clarification on it. Today, we're reviewing the tentative budget on April 7th, again, for discussion, not approval. On the 15th, I need to submit this document to, again, to the Department of Taxation. On May 26th, so about a month and a half from now, we will have the budget hearing. That will be the budget that is actually to be considered for approval by the school board. It may be this document, it, it may be slightly modified based on discussion and just based on changes that still may occur before that time. On June 8th, the original final budget is due to the state. So whatever the board does approve at the end of, of May, that budget has to be submitted to the state, Department of Taxation, Department of Education, and filed with the county clerk at that time. Just a quick review, not to get into too much detail, but we've, some of these things we have already discussed, but revenue assumptions are from the Department of Taxation. Again, the ad valorem property taxes numbers are in question at this point. But the local school support tax and government services tax projections have also been given to us. We know what our per pupil amount is for next year at this point, assuming the state doesn't change that, and I, I don't believe they will, except for a minor modification. Enrollment, again, at this point, is, is really important in gener, in generating a revenue number. And this is the same number that we were using for this year, so assuming flat enrollment, which I, I believe is a conservative way to look at this, at this point.
AJ, could, just for the record, would you explain why you're getting, asking for clarification on the ad valorem tax revenue?
Sure. So actually, President Walker, I, I have this a little, just a couple of slides down in the presentation. Would that be?
That's fine. I just want to make sure we get it in there.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. General funds staffing altogether, and this is before any of the, the staffing changes we discussed, we're looking at a $1.7 million overall increase, that being steps, negotiated percentages, increase in health insurance costs, and increasing our work comp and unemployment insurance rates going into next year. On the non-staffing side, we do not have increases to operating budgets. The exceptions, though, are for expected increase in property insurance and to reflect every growing internet costs as we expand bandwidth in the district. The COPS in schools grant is what the item was being discussed just before this. And actually, it's not a grant anymore. As I think about that, I really shouldn't say grant, but just the COPS in schools program that we set aside 230,000 for. And again, for instructional technology replacement, that normally is about a, at least a $500,000 item, and we've been able to, to modify that for next year. But that, that is a cost in the '21, '22 school year that will come back. So we're able to, to not have to worry about that for next year, but it is a, a cost that will come back as an ongoing cost.
Is that because we use Chromebooks and they expire after five years? If we went to a different technology, could we maybe get a little bit more longevity out of the devices we get?
Um, I think it's possible. I mean, there, there are certainly devices. I, I know it, it seems that folks who like their Apples, Apple products, they seem to think that they last longer and they, I think they get supported longer. Google, I think, currently supports Chromebooks for five years, and I'm looking at my IT director, so five to six years, depending. And I, I think it's something they actually just added a year or two, right? Because it was, it was five. I think they went to six or four and they went to five. So I, I think there's some recognition by those companies that while a Chromebook is a rather affordable device, it's still, when you're looking at the size of a, a school district, it's really expensive to outfit an entire district with them. So that, that certainly does play into it. And the, the process of how we handle it, where we, we provide them to every sixth grade and every ninth grader, in those years, they start to get new devices and they carry them through middle school or high school. You know, that, that's the process that we've had in place that we felt that we could sustain. And I always go back, it's frustrating, because if you'd go back three or four years and look at the revenue path we were on, there is no reason to have expected that we wouldn't have been able to sustain that. It's just over the last couple of years with some changes and what's coming in the future, it's become a little more concerning how we're going to make that happen. Okay, so the overall projection on the tentative budget, then what is in the document is 67.1 million in revenue and 67.1 million in expenditures. And with those numbers being the same, no difference, that equates to a balanced budget for operational purposes. So again, this includes all proposed reassignments, refundings, reductions, and attrition that was presented at the March 10th, 2020 meeting. Since then, we have updated the revenue numbers with what taxation has sent to us. And then also, we are provided with regular updates as to attrition happening within the district. And so updating on, on an individual basis, as we know those are happening, updating those. And, and with that, there is additional potential savings that is generated with more veteran staff being assumed to be replaced by less veteran staff. So the property tax issue, the last two years, all right, if you go back even three years, property, our ad valorem property taxes have increased by almost 4% and then well over 5% for two years prior. And the, with, with the economy, the way that it has been, the expectation was that there would continue to be an increase of about 5%. Excuse me. And so that expected increase, without any really reason to not expect that, was what we initially budgeted internally over the last months and used that for all of our revenue projections. So on March 25th, when we received the updated, or not even updated, it's really, they, they send preliminary tax projections for local school support tax and government services tax in February. We don't receive that for property taxes. So now we're getting the, the property tax projections in March 25th. And that number was about $400,000 less than what we had been budgeting. And initially, it, it was, caught us, caught me quite off-guard. And in talking with Marty Johnson, who helps us out with our bond issuances and, and just generally is looking out for us on the financial side of things, contacted the Department of Taxation, because what, what we normally see with tax revenue growth is that the tax increase you would see on the, the city of Carson City is the exact same that you see on our side percentage-wise. And what we were seeing is that, so in, for example, prior years, it was, say, three, if it was 3.85%, it would be a 3.85% increase for the city and for the school district. And so in this, the projections that taxation sent out, the increase for the city was 7% and the increase for the school district was 1.25, which again, doesn't seem to make sense in any way, based on any other indicators that we have. So we notified Department of Taxation that we were concerned, and they immediately reached out to City of Carson City to ask them to do a review, because they, they provide a lot of those numbers. And a big thanks to the staff in the assessor's office, with Dave Dolly and Gail Robertson and Beth Huck in the treasurer's office. They've been doing a lot of work, going through their system, trying to see if there's anything there that doesn't look quite right. They recently went, moved to a new software system. And so there's some concern that maybe this new software system, something didn't come out right. So they are very actively working with their software provider to try to figure that out. And then when they finish that review, we'll see what comes up with that and then go back to Department of Taxation. There are some items as well that Department of Taxation are responsible for generating. So there, it may be possible that there's actually an error somewhere within Department of Taxation's numbers. So it, it looked wrong and we're cautiously optimistic that there, there is just an error somewhere that will be found and then we will get back closer to that number that was initially budgeted. I'll, I'll stop there for a minute. Are there any other questions? Or, President Walker, do you have any questions about that?
Oh, I'm just wondering, do you think we'll get that information by our May dates?
I, I believe so, yeah. The, the city is feverishly working on this right now. They're, they're not, not happy about this themselves. So I know they're, they're working hard at that. I would expect by Friday, we will have a result from the city, and so we'll go with that to taxation and hopefully get a turnaround in the next weeks. I, I think by that first, when we come, we have our next meeting now, the first meeting in May, I, I would think it very reasonable that we would have an answer by then, and I could report back on that.
Sure. And I'd appreciate it if you and Mr. Stokes could just send out a brief to the trustees when you do get that information.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
This is Trustee Wilkie. So when we're talking about the reductions from the March 10th meeting, is that the reassignment, the refunding, the reduction, attrition, and new staff that totaled $2.36 million?
Yes. Yeah, it was everything that was in, in, in the, the slides of that meeting on the, I think it was the 10th of March. on the, I think it was the 10th of March. So it include-
Thank you.
Okay. So, so we're expecting to have that information revised for us. The other items that we would expect before we get to the budget hearing, there should continue to be staff attrition at this point. I believe we have about 30 positions that for one reason or another, folks are moving on to either other jobs or into retirement. In any year, we generally have a close to 100, if not more than 100 people. So as those, as we are made aware of those, I can update our costs and that will be updated before we get to the final budget. The last part of that transfers. So if you remember, out of the general fund, we need to make transfers to some other funds because the programs within those funds, the cost of those programs exceed the revenue generated, the state aid generated, state or federal, actually. So as we, we have not received state aid numbers on a number of funds and I have them coming up. So as we get those, we can update those transfers. Right now, they're just estimates. And then also, we have an RFP out for our food service management company. And as we're now, we've received their responses. And once we pick, our committee picks a company to bring for approval to the board, we will know what kind of transfer we would need to our nutrition services fund.
I'm going to find it.
No, it's assuming that it's-
Okay, so those funds that impact the general fund because of transfers are class size reduction fund. So again, we have a, we project that. We know how it's calculated, but it's still, until the state gives it to us, we don't exactly know what that is. Adult ed and prison ed funds. Right now, just the numbers being used are the same numbers for this current year. But that will be updated as well. Special education fund estimating about a $200,000 increase, which is in line with prior years, a little conservative, but in line with prior years. So hopefully in the next weeks, I believe it's by, they don't have to, or they are supposed to, the Nevada Department of Education is supposed to have those numbers for us by May 1st. But sometimes if they can, they get it to us earlier. Capital projects in the bond fund. So within this document is a capital improvement plan and it, it looks a little sparse compared to prior ones. And it just has to do with the year, the one that is already approved. And there are a lot of expenditures that are approved for this current year. The reality is that most, or almost all the projects are not going to be completed this year. So once Mr. Kornick and Mr. Johnson and I sit down and kind of finalize what the expenditures so far this year look like and what we think will carry over into next year, I will be updating the capital improvement plan, which will change what capital projects costs are expected and which bond fund costs are expected. So when we get to the final budget hearing at the end of May, that capital improvement plan and those two funds will definitely look different.
So this is trustee Wilkie. So that'll include the Eagle Valley remodel and if the trustees approve it, the Capital Christian property?
Correct. So yeah, the Eagle Valley, right now, in the current capital improvement plan, we have a full 8.2 million being approved to spend this year. And we are nowhere, nowhere near that number this year. So when we look at, you know, for example, let's say that so far, based on the work of architects and some planning and maybe getting some initial, I don't know, some initial work done, the cost was $200,000. And if Mr. Kornick, Mr. Johnson say, yeah, we believe there will be about $200,000 spent this year. When I show you the capital improvement plan at the end of May, you will see a line for Eagle Valley at about $8 million, just subtracting 200,000 out of the original 8.2 that was approved.
Thank you.
And so related to this budget potentially, and I don't want to get too far into this, I guess, but I just think it's with the events happening in the world and the impact it clearly is having on the Nevada economy, I thought it important just to talk a little bit about the economic impact of COVID-19 virus that we are seeing and just some information that we've gathered. And, you know, a lot of this is from news articles and things like that. So nothing that we've been given directly from NDE or anything like that, but just to, I guess, kind of try to wrap our head around what's happening and what the impact may be from a fiscal standpoint. So first off, just the idea of having the benefit of having a well-diversified economy. The state general fund, 40% of the revenue that goes into the state general fund is dependent entirely on casino, just whatever activities casinos do. And that is a really significant portion of the budget to be dependent on one area. So with the casinos being shut down statewide, that is of great concern for the state and concern for us because ultimately, the state, while there are local revenues that are generated that help fund the schools, if there is a seesaw effect of between the local revenues being generated and then what the state has to make up. So there's always a state portion, almost always a state portion that is being kicked in. And so if the state revenues are dropping, that would impact the state's ability to fund, fund its part. Sales tax projected, and this was over a week ago. So I don't know if this still holds or not. But just to, I guess, again, just to kind of wrap your head around what's happening, they are looking at a 30% drop in sales tax revenues. The local school support tax, or LST, is a sales tax. It's a 2.6% sales tax. Currently, that sales tax generates about 1.5 billion annually for schools. If that would drop by 30%, you're talking about $450 million that would be lost in revenue for the local school support tax. In the current formula, the Nevada plan formula, any local school support tax increases allow the state to provide less to school districts. Again, as you have higher local revenues and LST is considered a local revenue, then the state doesn't have to put in as much. In this case, if you have a drop in local school support tax revenue, that would mean that the state needs to put in more money to meet its guarantee. So when you look at that per pupil amount that is referenced by everyone here in this presentation, it's $7,285 per pupil. That is a guarantee given by the legislature and the governor saying that this is what you are going to be funded at. And the revenues that get you there are things like this local school support tax and state DSA aid. So if that guarantee exists and the local school support tax is dropping dramatically, the state, based on the formula, effectively has to make up the difference dollar for dollar. But if you, if you look at the state's reserves, they do not have $450 million in reserve. So that, they cannot plug that hole by themselves of the loss in local school support tax revenue. So what we don't know is exactly, we know Governor Sislak declared a state of emergency. We know that the federal government is providing a great deal of emergency aid to states. But we don't know exactly how that would be used and if it could be used to support that. So that would, that would probably be the best solution at this point to kind of hold, or keep districts whole. On Friday, I believe it was, the governor sent out notification to state agencies to prepare for cuts totaling $687 million over the biennium, the rest of this biennium, which include, or kind of the expectation was a 4% cut this year that we are already in. And then another 6% to 14% cut in the following year. So those are some pretty sobering numbers. And again, it's early in trying to figure this all out. I will say that I, from going back, the best information I have, it looks like there was only one time, and I think it was 1993, that the state in the middle of a biennium reduced the per pupil amount. So, and I don't, I know in that time, they were, the nation was coming out of a recession, kind of '91, '92, so, and maybe in Nevada. And I'm just not sure if '93 was still a problematic year. But, so in talking with some of my counterparts around the state, there doesn't seem to be an expectation, at least right now, that there would be a reduction in the per pupil amount. I think to make that happen, there would have to be a special legislative session brought back to Carson City. But the concern then would be in that following year. So this is something that all the district CFOs are talking about and we're kind of passing information around. I'm sure it'll be a topic of discussion at the next Commission on School Funding meeting, which happens in about our next Thursday and Friday. But, you know, just certainly a concern. So I didn't mean to take it off topic, but this clearly could impact the budget next year. So I thought it would just be good to give an update to the board as to what we're seeing. So with that, I'll take any questions.
You know, AJ, I think that when we think about this, and I was talking about this with Mr. Stokes, we've seen tough situations before with our economy. And one of the things, Carson City always comes together and supports each other, the board, the teachers, the administrators, our unions. And so, you know, we're, I think that the best path is to make a conservative budget that's based on our best projections at this time. And then as those unknowns become known, that's when we are all going to have to work together and figure out how we're going to get to the next step. Do we have any other comments or questions from the trustees?
This is Laura. I just have a question. Back when you were, I don't know what slide number it was, but the general fund projection slide, where you state that that includes all proposed reassignment, refunding, reduction and attrition in the March 10 meeting. Does that, so does this tentative budget include the reduction of the Kinder para post? Or was that something that was adjusted in that time, at that meeting?
Thank you, trustee Crossman. It does. So it includes every, every thought we had on possibly reassigning people to positions within the district and every idea we had to get folks into grant funding and out of the general fund. It had those Kinder para positions and the two interpreter positions that we were looking at, which really are more based on caseload than that. And then any, at that time, what, what bit of attrition that we knew of between retirements and resignations at that time. So yes, the Kinder paras and all of those other folks are included at this time.
And I think, Laura, one of the things that, in my mind, I'd like at least to give people a heads up so that if there is an opportunity for a job, if they know there's a likelihood that that job could be eliminated, that people have plenty of warning to kind of start to accept other positions that might become available. And my hope is that if we take those steps and then we're able to recapture some funds through the ad florum error that we're hoping was made or whatnot, maybe we could recall those people. But I would much rather give them a heads up now as opposed to the last minute saying, oh, by the way, now we don't have the funds. So I'm just thinking, what's the best way to kind of treat our employees going forward?
Thanks, Mike, and I understand that. I just wanted some clarification because I couldn't remember everything that was in that March 10 one. So thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the trustees?
Yeah, Mike, this is Joe.
Go ahead.
I just wanted, want to run it to thank AJ. AJ, this is, you know, some sober, excuse me, sobering information. And we know we're all in flux right now with not only a budget deficit, but also now with the ramifications of how this whole COVID-19 thing is going to play out. So I appreciate you providing us this information and giving us a, an understanding of what some of the impacts are. Don't really, well, I guess I have one question and it's probably not fair to ask, but I'll ask it anyway and it can be a follow-up answer. And I don't know that I want to go down that road, but if we have these, you know, if something like that happens where it's a state of emergency and funding is going to get cut even more as a result of some of this stuff, are we, do we have any ability to go to the state and say, look, a lot of these unfunded mandates or partially funded mandates, we just can't support right now and we're not going to get rid of them, but we got to put, you know, some of this stuff, if not quite a bit of it, on hold for a while? Do districts have any kind of ability like that, given a, quote, state of emergency?
So I may look to Mr. Stokes to help me out with this a little bit. But I believe, I mean, we can certainly go to NDE. And I don't know to what extent they have the ability to ask for waivers on certain requirements that we have. And just the example I would use during the recession, leading up to it, there had been a minimum, what they called the minimum textbook spending requirement had been put into place, I think back in '05, '04, '05. And that was something that was waived during the recession because of the bad times. And it was something that forced districts to spend money basically on supplies instead of spending money, being able to spend that money on staff. So the, I think the idea was that it would allow districts to save positions by not spending as much money on supplies or textbooks. So I think that's certainly an opportunity. I don't know how flexible they can be with that. It probably depends somewhat on the legislation or the, the way it's written into statute itself. I think otherwise, the opportunity is really just during the legislative session and advocating for that sort of thing. I mean, I, I think that most of us and most of, I think all the districts in the state would argue that, given the mandates that we are held to at the state level and federal level, we are simply not funded to meet those mandates. And so that, that's under normal circumstances and clearly that becomes exponentially more difficult when, when funding is cut.
So AJ, I wanted to let Mr. Stokes kind of weigh in on that point.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to add that on Thursday of this week, the superintendents will be having a conference call, joined by Superintendent of Public Instruction Joan Ebert. And so part of the, well, the reason for the meeting is to discuss the most recent ask from the governor to state officials to come up with potential budget cuts. And so this is essentially the first meeting with school- potential budget cuts. And so, this is essentially the first meeting with school personnel to talk about the condition of the financial, talk about the financial condition of the state at this time. So, while I don't have a lot that I know about, I think everything from here forward that we start looking at from an operational perspective has to be suspect to possible reductions. And if, in the last recession, which took us 10 years really to climb out of, I mean, we, you folks saw the impact of that, where we went for years without replacing instructional materials, and it was too long, but we had very little choice. And so, I think we can always err on the side of things where we're going to try to do as much as we can for our students. And, you know, we'll ask for forgiveness later if that's what has to happen.
Sure.
But we'll try to, we'll try to take care of business first and, you know, monitor and adjust to do those things that we always do in education.
Well, and you know, Joe, I mean, we're a local-controlled state. So, I think that our best bet is to work with our educators, which we've hired to kind of guide this process, because the last thing we want to do is to make a decision at the board level, which is going to impact our school's ability to receive Title I funding or other grant funds, which is basically what happens if you're out of compliance. You start to lose big pots of money. And so, I think that we would be wise to bet all of that through Mr. Stokes and make sure that we're fully apprised of what costs would come with non-compliance.
Right. And I completely agree with you. My thought in bringing that up was so that those kinds of conversations could be had with the superintendents and NASB and everybody involved in those types of things, you know. And I don't want to go down that road, but my thought was just those kinds of conversations, being a potential state of emergency would be worth having, so that maybe some of those ramifications of that, you know, maybe subside while we're trying to, you know, while everybody might be trying to get through a pretty dicey situation.
Well, and my guess is, is that with the state of things, I think that the state's going to be giving school districts some leeway to make some difficult decisions and kind of navigate through this process. I mean, that's just my guess, but something's going to have to be done. So, I can't imagine they're going to be really tough with some of those unfunded mandates.
Yeah, no, I would agree. Thank you. I appreciate the discussion.
That's a great question, Joe. Go ahead.
Go ahead. No, I'm just saying, when we went through that recession, though, we were lucky enough to have the associations and the administration and the board work on having an Indian Fund balance that built up enough to take care of the things that came at us. And we don't have that at this point either.
Well, and I think that that's why I'm saying that, as in the past, you know, difficult situations, you know, one of the things we do is we come together. And we're not exactly sure what that's going to look like at this point, but I think certainly, we all want to do what we can do to protect as many of the jobs that we have for our employees, as well as provide a top-notch education to each and every one of our students. So, I think when and if the call comes, I think that we're going to come together, and that's my hope.
I would agree with that.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Any public comment?
Hey, Mike, this is just, I, this is Laurel. I got a text during the last, after our last call for public comment, and someone couldn't find the email address. So, I'm just going to read it out loud, so in case anybody wants to do it. It's all lowercase, publiccomments@carson.k12.nv.us, just so that it's out there in case anybody is looking for that email address.
Thank you. And did they forward you a comment that you could make on their behalf?
No, they didn't have a comment. They just were trying to figure out where they would be able to email it in.
Okay. So, Laurel, if you want to read that address one more time, and then I'm going to take a five-minute recess to allow anybody who wants to email in any comments or questions, a little bit of time to do so.
Okay. So, the email address for public comment is publiccomments@carson.k12.nv.us.
Thank you, Laurel. So, I just got advice from Ryan Russell, our legal representative, that we could flex rest of the agenda, and then we'll take any public comment that comes in between now and then. So, we'll just come back, anything that's entered in on the budget before we adjourn the meeting. Any oppose, any opposition to that, trustees?
No. Do we need to move, make, have a motion to do so?
I think we, it's a flexible agenda, the way we have it written, correct, Ryan?
Yeah. So, this was listed as a discussion item only anyway, so it's going beyond the mandates of the open meeting law to accept public comment. And so, what the president will be doing is just finishing the agenda as approved, and at the end, before there's adjournment, having one more period of public comment where people can weigh in specifically on the budget item.
Is that okay with you, Laurel?
Yes, that's fine. I was just checking.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, and this is for possible action. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Richard. I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the Carson, I move that the Carson City School District Board trustees approve the consent agenda. Test submitted.
This is Lupe, second.
All right. We have a motion by Richard and a second by Lupe. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is informational items. These are for discussion only. Any questions of Mr. Stokes or staff involved in any of these items? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is request for future agenda topics.
So, this is trustee Wilkie.
Hi.
Now that we, we're still unsure about graduation, so, I kind of wanted to propose, and I don't know if it's a future agenda item or if it's more of an administration thing, but I was thinking for graduation, for Pioneer, and for Carson High, depending on how it goes, is maybe we have like a parade style, like we do for Nevada Day, and close down Carson Street on both those days that we have delegated for graduation.
I think staff could look into that. I know Gavin and Jason and Rich and Tash are actively working on that. I think that it probably would depend on if we still have social distancing in place.
Right. I understand that.
Yeah. This is Joe. I like that idea of recognizing them somehow, but I know in the past week or so, some teachers were trying to get together to do kind of a parade of sorts, to do some drive-bys of where the students live, to kind of just hold up signs and say, "We miss you." And that was, the police department and everybody was a bit concerned about that for those same reasons, with social distancing and the, you know, an act like that, you know, inadvertently causing people to want to come together. So, I'm open to suggestions, because I'd sure like to see something for these students.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that.
And that's why I was thinking the parade thing, because on Carson Street, because of the redevelopment that they did, there's parking spaces. So, people could even be in cars, and the graduates could be in cars and backup pickups or whatever, within six feet of each other. And it would just be something that I think, because we're Carson City, that we could pull that off. I don't think you could do that in Washoe or Vegas, but I think it's definitely something that I think we could do here in Carson.
Yeah.
I, I.
Go ahead, Laurel.
This is Laurel. I would just say, for a future agenda topic for staff to consider alternatives for graduation and keep it open to what other ideas they might have, that that's something that could be workable.
And I think we certainly want to make sure that Carson High School and Pioneer High School are, you know, this is their event. So, I want to make sure that their voice is heard, and we don't dictate to them and then kind of take away their powers either. So, I think that those are great ideas. I think that, well, I know that staff is working on considerations for that. And I think that we're all kind of sitting with our fingers crossed and hoping maybe these kids get a traditional graduation. We just can't ensure that at this point. Yeah. And Tasha just motioned that we may have to push it out a little bit and actually do it in July. So, just as our employees of the years will be recognized in some way, we don't know what that will be yet, we will do something to represent our graduates. And I think we've had some good discussion and ideas here, and I'm sure there's other ideas out there that the teachers and the administrators are coming up with also. Any other?
Thank you.
Future topics?
Just something for Stacy to take back to NIAA. I have a couple of student athletes who are willing to compete in July. If we could come back and do that, they would totally be willing to extend the spring sport season. So, on that matter, if you could just have them email me, because we do have a teleconference at the end of April, and I can bring that up. That would be awesome. I'll have them do that.
Thank you. And I guess I would say the same thing that Stacy said. If you have questions or requests of NASB, kind of like Joe had brought up, and I'll be happy to raise those questions with Deb, Joe. But other topics that you think that the School Board Association of Nevada needs to look at or start to weigh in on, please feel free to email me. And of course, Laurel is the vice president, so we could email Laurel as well and share those ideas with that agency. All right. Any other future agenda topics?
And then just add, if anybody has any NIAA stuff, they can send it to me before the end of April.
Thanks, Stacy. All right. Did we get any other public comment in on the budget? No? Okay. Seeing no other, I'd, my brain is going. No other comments. We will adjourn this meeting at 8:44. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Thanks. Goodbye.